The regular meeting of the Aurora City Council for Monday, April 11, 2022, is called to order. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Kaufman.
Here.
Mayor Protim Bergen. Councilmember Coombs.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Present.
Councilmember Jorinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember McConnell.
Present.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Mario.
Present.
Councilmember Sundberg.
Here.
And Councilmember Zavonic.
Here.
There's a quorum.
Announcement of public call-in line.
Good evening. City Council welcomes feedback from the public on both matters appearing on the agenda and during public invited to be heard. If you would like to speak and have not already spoken to an operator, please press star three. For those watching on Channel Eight, call 855-695-3475 and press star three when connected. You will hear a prompt confirming you are in line to speak to an operator and then be able to continue listening to the meeting. When the operator comes on the line, please be ready to give them your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on. Keep in mind you must press star three before the city clerk reads the title of the item you wish to speak on. Finally, as a reminder, council does not allow comments about any items on the agenda during public invited to be heard. Each speaker is allowed three minutes, and public invited to be heard is limited to one hour total.
Please join me in a moment of prayer. O Lord, our God, and our Father, we come to you and we ask that you would look upon this particular gathering tonight to keep us safe and guide us in our decisions. Bless our city with honorable citizens, industry, sound education, and good government. Unite our community together, even though we come from different backgrounds. We pray that there be justice and peace in our city. Give the city council and citizens the wisdom, direction, and sensitivity to the business and proceedings before us tonight. Hear us, therefore, as we commit this meeting to the help of the community. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Executive session update. Executive, we discussed litigation, acquisition issues, and collective bargaining. Approval of the minutes for March 14, 2022. Motion?
Mayor Sundberg.
Councilmember Sundberg.
I move to approve the minutes.
It's been moved by Councilmember Sundberg, second by...
Second.
Second by Councilmember McConnell to approve the minutes of March 14, 2022. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, question before us is the approval of the minutes for March 14, 2022. Call for the question.
Mayor Kaufman. I'm sorry, Councilmember Jorinsky, we don't have your vote?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously to approve the minutes of the March 14, 2022 meeting.
I have three proclamations to read. The first one is for Aurora Arbor Week. John Wieslawski, if I got that right? Good. Okay. A Friday, April 15, 2022, is designated as Colorado Arbor Day, and whereas the observance of Arbor Day creates an awareness among citizens of the roles that trees play in our day-to-day lives, and whereas the city of Aurora has been certified as Tree City, as a Tree City USA, by the Arbor Day Foundation for a 38th year in honor of its commitment to effective urban forest management, and whereas trees provide shade, control erosion, increase property values, beautify our neighborhoods, and enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and whereas to celebrate the significance of trees in our community and to celebrate Arbor Day, the city of Aurora will plant trees at Settlers Park to celebrate the expanse and vigor of Aurora's urban forests. Now, therefore, I, Mike Kaufman, Mayor of the city of Aurora, Colorado, do hereby proclaim April 15, 20... April 15 to the 22nd, 2022, as Arbor... Aurora Arbor Week, in witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Aurora, Colorado, to be affixed this 31st day of March, 2022. How many trees do we have in Aurora? Lots, lots of trees. Oh, thank you very much.
We don't have enough, need more. Just a few things, Mayor. Thank you for your support and counsel. Thank you for your support for the urban forest in the city of Aurora. I just want to touch on a few things. Arbor Week is important, but we have a few other things that are going on. We do have free mulch days also, where we will... If you need free mulch, bring your truck, bring your trailer, we'll load it up for you. You don't have to shovel it yourself. That is at the South Dawson Street. That's at East Hampton and Dawson Street. Please enter at South Dawson Street and look for the signs. We will be giving out mulch from 8:00 a.m. till noon. And then just one other thing, another great program that we have is the Forestry Apprentice Program, where if anybody's interested and wants to be an arborist and wants to work in trees, we will train you. So please go to the Aurora website, apply for that job, and you can work in trees too.
Thank you. National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Oh, we got the whole team up here, all right. Not the whole team, because a lot of them are doing their job right now, so we don't want to say the whole team. That sends a wrong message here. Okay, whereas... And I just want to say that I've really enjoyed my visits up there, and it's amazing what you all do, and just very impressive, and thank you, on behalf of the citizens of residents of our city. Whereas, when an emergency occurs in Aurora, Colorado, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas emergency communication specialists are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from residents who contact and the information sent by Aurora 911, and whereas emergency communication services are the single vital link of our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities, by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas emergency communication specialists of Aurora 911 have contributed substantially to their apprehension, to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas the members of Aurora 911 have exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their duties in the past year. Now, therefore, I, Mike Kaufman, Mayor of the city of Aurora, Colorado, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10 through the 16th, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, in witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Aurora, Colorado, to be affixed this 28th day of March, 2022. Mike Kaufman, Mayor, Aurora, Colorado. Tina, thank you so much, and thank your whole team on that here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you to the members of council for your support. Nothing happens without these amazing men and women here, and for all of those who are still sitting at their console or who are maybe enjoying a well-deserved day off, they are the lifeblood of this city, and they make this world go around, and so I cannot express enough my thanks and gratitude in how proud I am of this team and the hard work that they do. And thank you all in the community for your support, because we can't do this without you. So thank you also for being a good partner to us.
National Crime Victims Rights Week. Lisa Betan. So this is your... These are our victims... What is the title?
Victim Advocates.
Victim Advocates. Well, thank you so much for all you do. Whereas, millions of people in the United States experience the violation of crime each year and may experience emotional, physical, psychological... Whereas, a just nation acknowledges the tremendous impact that victimization has on individuals' families and communities and ensures that victims are treated with fairness, dignity, and respect as they interact with the criminal legal system, and whereas there is work to be done, as too many victims experience barriers and inequities in fully participating in the criminal legal system, and whereas the Aurora Police Department Victims Services Unit is joining forces with community-based victim assistance programs, criminal justice officials, and other community members throughout the city of Aurora, state of Colorado, and the United States to raise awareness of victims' rights and observe National Crime Victims Rights Week, and whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 24 to the 30th, 2022, provides an opportunity to raise awareness of the foundation of victims' rights, fairness, dignity, and respect, and to recommit to promoting the rights, access, and equity of all victims by assuring that all victims are afforded their legal rights and then provided with assistance as they face the financial, physical, and psychological impact of victimization. And now, therefore, I, Mike Kaufman, Mayor of the city of Aurora, Colorado, do hereby proclaim April 24 to the 30th, 2022, as National Crime Victims Rights Week, in witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Aurora, Colorado, to be affixed on this 25th day of March, 2022. Mike Kaufman, Mayor, Aurora, Colorado. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members, for your ongoing support. We definitely could not do what we do without your support. We had over 1,500 call-outs last year, so 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. There's one of us on call, and that includes holidays, birthdays, all the things, and we served almost 20,000 victims last year, so one of the highest numbers ever. Thank you, ladies, and thank you to our command for their support as well.
Public invited to be heard.
Mayor, we do have 13 individuals in person and one on the call-in line.
Good evening, city council. My name is Ally. I live at Ward Four. Tonight, I speak only on behalf of myself, not my employer, not my family, not my cats, so don't call anyone to tell on me. I am... First, I wanted to thank you for putting this new podium in place. I don't know how much council has to do with that, but this podium is now accessible to wheelchairs, the first step amongst many in making this room accessible to all of your constituents, so I want to celebrate that as much as I can. Whoever's responsible for it, thank you from the bottom of your heart, and I look forward to continuing changes that will make getting to the podium accessible to wheelchairs. Tonight, I am here to speak to say that Police Chief Wilson pointed with the specific direction from management and from the people of Aurora to reform and revolutionize the globally notorious Aurora Police Department. Her job description was later unofficially amended. Her goalpost was moved from "build a better police department" to "and make the men like you while you enact big changes and raise expectations." Any woman who's ever been tasked with that kind of major operational overhaul can tell you that those expectations are unrealistic, and the administrative choice to terminate Chief Wilson is clearly retaliation for her commitment to making those same changes that she was directed to make. The message has been sent to the community primarily by the legislators who applied pressure, and secondarily by the administration that capitulated to the political pressure, is the city is committed to maintaining the status quo. And let's not forget, the status quo is a worldwide embarrassment. The status quo is repeated incidence of officers driving intoxicated on the job. The status quo is a proven pattern of practice... A proven pattern and practice of discrimination. The status quo is innocent people of color on the pavement, people pistol-whipped and killed. Bold change has been called for by Auroraans, and regardless of who is named chief, you must prioritize that bold change regardless of who is upset by it. If you are going to use your considerable power to influence the administration of the police department, it should be for systemic cultural changes, not by eliminating the most public advocate for those bold changes. Thank you.
John Ronquillo, followed by Arnie Schultz.
Good evening, council members. My name is John Ronquillo, and I'm a resident of Aurora residing in Ward Five. I'm here too to express my concern and displeasure with the recent firing of Aurora Police Chief Vanessa Wilson. While a city should be more than its police department, that is where the lion's share of attention has been thrust, as we have in this community for years, been witness to the tumult of the Aurora Police Department. Being a sworn officer, no doubt, is a challenge that most of us are not willing to undertake, and thus those officers who wear their badges with pride and do their best to serve and protect this community humanely and ethically deserve our thanks. As a former lobbyist for law enforcement and as the son of a former military police officer, that respect was instilled in me at an early age. However, the microscope this department has been placed under isn't because of good behavior, and Vanessa Wilson's leadership is not a root cause of the issues that plague the department. In fact, I believe her leadership was much needed in light of some of the harmful actions taken by select APD officers over the past few years. She was willing to take bold, necessary steps to work toward the accountability, justice, fairness, and healing that this community has asked for. She has responded to the community. She listened to the community. She was present in the community. City Manager Twombly has also recognized this, saying in a recent press conference that she prioritized community involvement and that it was a strength of hers. I think many of us can agree. Mayor Kaufman said that she was the right person for the right time. These were obviously hollow platitudes, as Mr. Twombly, with the support of Mayor Kaufman, has cut her time short. In fact, the pivot was pretty quick, as the mayor cited, and I quote, "a monumental failure of leadership," when referencing the decision to terminate her. Yet, when asked at the press conference, Mr. Twombly couldn't or wouldn't provide any specific failure of hers. And, Mr. Twombly, I'm somebody who has educated a number of local government managers, and I sincerely believe that yours too is in an unenviable position sometimes. As someone who is trained to manage the day-to-day operations of a city the size of ours, you have my deep sympathy. I really do. Yours isn't an easy job either, and while you stated that this decision was yours and yours alone, you are subject to the pressures from a body that surrounds you, and many of them have made known, some much stronger than others, and perhaps even more undignified as to how they feel about Chief Wilson. But as a concerned resident, I was happy to see that some members stood with Chief Wilson today at a press conference and that they have continued to support her. I feel, sir, that the fallout and reactions from the decision shouldn't be shouldered by you alone. But by removing Vanessa Wilson, you have asserted that she is not good enough to continue leading APD, despite the feedback from many of us who vehemently disagree with you. By removing Vanessa Wilson, you contend that Aurora can do better, and now that is your challenge, not just to Mr. Twombly, but to this entire council.
You're reaching your three minutes.
Not just in hiring a new police chief, but in yet again working toward building community trust and in creating a better culture within APD. And if you all can't do better in that realm, then I think it's probably time to refocus on who is the actual monumental failure of leadership in this situation. Thank you for your time.
Mayor and council, according to the FBI's Fourth Quarter of 2021 Report on Crime, which is the most recent, Aurora's increase in the rate of violent crime was 28% lower than... From the year before compared to Westminster's. And Aurora's increase in the rate of property crime was 8% lower than Westminster's during that same timeframe. Face the facts. Crime is up statewide and nationwide, not just in Aurora. And Aurora is not the highest, as you pretend. That didn't stop some of you from campaigning on Aurora's crime rate being up dramatically, and some of you already on city council, including the mayor, from agreeing with them. Although, according to the data reported to the FBI, for the first three quarters of 2021 compared to the previous three quarters, the rate of increase in violent crime decreased by 35.5%, and that for property crime decreased by 14.8%, as did the major crimes totals. Those are figures since Chief Wilson was first appointed as the acting chief of police. Why on earth would you want to replace her as chief of police? It makes no sense, other than politics. In an interview on December 7th, on June 23rd, 2020, Chief Nick Metz, who retired from the Aurora Police Department in 2019, said, "I think it provides an opportunity to really try to see the other perspectives a little bit more in depth, being retired. It is a different world when you're in the middle of everything." Metz watched the video of George Floyd's death, knowing it happened two blocks from where he grew up. He said, "That was an incredibly disturbing thing for me to watch, watching it and knowing that these offices, those offices should have done something different. They should have heard him. There were so many opportunities to have made that situation right, and the same is true in Aurora. The people have spoken. The people have really spoken," Metz said. "Law enforcement agencies are going to have to do things differently. They have no choice." He now, as does Chief Wilson always did, believes in police reform and reaching out to the community. During her tenure as acting chief and chief of the APD, Chief Wilson has been doing an excellent job of firing, disciplining, retraining, and training police officers, and doing everything else that is recommended in the dissent decree. Chief Wilson deserves praise for her work and should be retained as Aurora's chief of police. Aurora has already paid many millions of dollars as a result of lawsuits brought against the APD for excessive and sometimes deadly force. $15 million alone in the wrongful death of Elijah McLean. There are council members who would prefer to fire a police chief who is reforming the APD in a manner spelled out in dissent decree and hire someone else who is likely to cause even more lawsuits.
You're reaching your three minutes.
This is just the wrong thing to do to the taxpayers of Aurora. Thank you.
Omen Cross, followed by Melissa Bergland.
Oh, no, stop the sirens, he's back. Hi. So I don't think I have to reintroduce myself here after you decided to lock me out last time. So, in coordination with the APD, because I promised them I'd try, I will do my best to be as professional as I can in this moment, considering there's about six people up here who've spent the last month and a half calling me garbage, and I'm real tired of it. Yeah, look at me. I know you're busy, but these people, these are the people you serve. That's what you're getting paid to do. So every moment you spend looking down while these people are talking, you're disrespecting them. Remember that. Anyway, as for me personally, I've had an interesting month. I've gone from a spearhead to public enemy number one, and I didn't even do anything other than this. It's funny that coercively this council sat here and spent a month and then some, not just disrespecting me, but a whole group of people, knowing that they don't have the supporting programs in place. And now, the one week in between, now we've lost our police chief too. It seems like everybody's real busy to point the finger at somebody else, but I don't think the police chief ever tried to violate my right to free speech. I don't think the police chief is allowing businesses in the city to operate off contracts that break not just city charters, but state and federal laws too. I don't think that the police chief or any specific member of this council individually thinks that they want to keep using the attorney here to try and expedite processes against individuals, only using their right to free speech. I also found myself being spied on by the APD. It's almost dignifying that you're that afraid of me. But I just wanted to come back because now you know you're not going to get rid of me. And no matter how many websites we have to pre-register on, no matter how many limitations are put on how many of us can speak, we're going to keep coming back, because it's not just about me anymore. There's too many people here who aren't being represented. There's too many city employees whose voices aren't being heard, and I don't know about everybody that's sitting out there, but I'm tired of it. And before anybody's sent to put an end to me, I'm going to remind them that they do have the power to stand up to you, and I'm going to do it myself, because I warned you the first time we spoke that there were three options. You chose option C. So, Mr. Mayor, you know what that means. Next year, you get to deal with me whether you like it or not, because that's when your term comes up, and I'm coming for you personally. Have a nice day.
Melissa Bergland, followed by Richard Riel.
Good evening, city council. My name is Missy Bergland. I am an Aurora City resident. I was born and raised in this city. I have reached out to several of you for conversations. Some of you have called me back, and we've had conversations. Some of you haven't. A little bit about my history. I stood in this room with my mother when she was awarded the Victim Rights Advocate of the Year for the city of Aurora. I worked with the Aurora Police Department very closely when I worked in child welfare. I had police officers come to my house and warn me about being on a kill list in this community. I trust, believe, and care for our police officers. I believe that Chief Wilson was doing the work necessary to ensure that our police department met the needs of our community, took care of our community, and changed patterns of behavior in our department that have led to fiscal liability that is higher than most any other police department in the nation. My worry is by disrupting the work that she has been doing actively, you are making a choice to send our police department back by decades. a choice to send our police department back by decades. You are making the choice to send a message to officers that old behaviors are okay, because if somebody challenges them, you're going to get rid of their chief. I am disappointed in this decision, as somebody who has lived in and loved this city my entire life. I am disappointed because in the last two months, my children have sat through multiple secure perimeters on their campus at school let-out time. And instead of dealing with that, what you are choosing is a political game of fire the chief because we don't like her, because for whatever reason, you're beholden to union, the union president, or whoever it is. I don't care about that. I care about my children, their safety at school, my community, and the future of this community. And frankly, my hope is that as you look towards a new chief, you're able to find somebody who, at the minimal level, meets the integrity that Chief Wilson has provided to every member of this community through her outreach, her relationship building, and her commitment to our youth, which is not a commitment that I have seen from you. I have seen members of this council defund violence prevention techniques by nearly 40%. I have seen this council make decisions that do not put my children's safety first, but rather tell me, "You don't care about them, you care about your political alliances." My children don't care about those political alliances. My children care about playing at the playground, having fun with their peers, and living in our beautiful city. And I hope you can get back to caring about us, and not your political alliances.
Richard Riel, followed by Jan Wilsab.
Good evening, Mayor Mike, city council. How are we doing today? It's a happy Monday. Come up here to speak to you. My name is Richard Riel. As she has been, I'm a longtime native of Colorado, grew up here. I remember Aurora when it was just a plains, just grassland. So, right now, I come up before you, because I had several ideas to add to our parks, rec and open spaces. Great ideas, I thought. I was recently working over at Plains Conservative Park, and on the north side, great park, and thank you for supporting it. But on the north side, I've gone thinking, hmm, something's missing here. Something's big missing over here. But I've also brought back memories, and I think we all heard about it on the news, the Marshall Fire. How it engulfed, it started from one side of town and went over a highway, you know. But look, we got the same fuels in Plains Conservative, and we got it in other areas too. It's out of balance. And I'm thinking, what do we need here? I'm going, hmm, you know what'd be great? To see a herd of buffalo right on the Plains Conservation Park. Just a small herd, something to take care of, the grass, the native grasses. I get that the city wants native grasses, but it'd be great to draw more people to the park. And I'm over there on E-470, there's a toll booth, it's abandoned. We can reutilize that toll booth as an overlook for that herd of buffalo. And the Plains Conservative is an awesome place, it just needs more visitation. And I would also like to, maybe if we do go with that route, let's invite some native tribes in there to salute some powwells and native celebrations right there, to show our heritage. I am, I've done my ancestry, and I do have Native Americans here. I have a Rappahoe, Kiowa, Mesclero Apache, and I'm proud of that tradition, but it seems to be lost here in Colorado. I've done some research, there's only a few places in Colorado where powwells do happen. Not very many places. The biggest one is down in Albuquerque. It's absolutely fabulous. It's great for educational, cultural, to bring our youth together, to learn about the Native American race, to learn about the buffalo.
You've reached your three minutes.
Okay, that's all I have to say. I wanted to say more, but of another park, but please approach me later on. Thank you.
Jan Wilsab, followed by Katrina Zarelli.
I guess I missed typing my name, and it's Jen Wilson. I'm here this evening to talk to this council and to the citizens of Aurora about something very wrong that was done in Aurora the last week. That action was the latest of many indicative of the contempt that this new council majority holds for the people, especially the people of color and the marginalized in Aurora. That something was the firing of Chief Vanessa Wilson. You all know about Chief Wilson's record. You all know that she held some members of our police force responsible for their egregious actions toward our citizens. You all know that a member of this board publicly called her trash in a public forum, because she was not willing to turn a blind eye to those hurtful actions. And councilperson, that councilperson was supported by the majority of this board when they put their official stamp of approval on that public display of disrespect by privately dismissing the deserved sanction for that action. Now, let me tell you why I admire Chief Wilson. Every time she commended and supported the good officers of our city, I trusted that she spoke the truth. Conversely, every time she held an officer who had abused their power accountable, I whispered a quiet prayer of thanks. The thank you was for the people of our city who had been victims of disrespect and abuse by those few officers who abused their power with impunity. The thank you was for the people of color who finally felt heard and respected, and most importantly, protected. The thank you was for the good officers, some of which are my family and friends, who would not feel the pressure to cover up for the abusers. The thank you was for these officers who could now look at those with whom they served with a true respect. The thank you was for our city, a city working hard to overcome a too-long and too-tragic history of abuse at the hands of bad officers. Now, if I'm wrong and hold this council responsible, and it was the sole action of the city manager who fired Chief Wilson without their pressure, great. This is your opportunity to right that wrong. Either way, now is your opportunity to right that wrong. The hiring of a new chief of police is in your hands. I'm calling on you to rehire Chief Wilson. I strongly believe you will not find another person with the experience, the history, the integrity, and the concern for the people of our city and for the officers who serve us. I'm calling on this council to rehire Chief Wilson, if she would be willing to accept it, by unanimous acclamation. I'm calling on this council to do the right thing for my city. I'm calling on this city council to respect its people and give Chief Wilson the backing to protect our community and to continue to help our police force to be an example of the best in the country. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Katrina Zarelli, followed by Candace Bailey.
For at least 50 years, Aurora's local government has been run by Republicans. For not even two years of that, progressives had half of city council, not enough for a majority, and weren't able to get most platform reforms passed due to not enough votes. I say that to shine a light on these false talking points, that Aurora is where it is now because of leftist changes to the city, and not because of the conservative policies and city planning that have shaped the city for half a century. I do think the majority of Auroraans want affordable housing, a living wage, and an equitable city, but those weren't passed. In those two years, including at last week's city council meeting, two weeks ago, I heard progressive members agree with conservative members when they were on the same page. I heard liberal members giving credit where it's due, and voting for an ordinance, like the diaper ordinance, you know, put forth by the right, independent. Again, it happened just last week, it's going to happen again tonight. In the crime ordinance two weeks ago, I was surprised that all members to the right refused to add in a factual statement, which is that crime is rising not only nationwide, but internationally, and it's spurred by the pandemic, just refused to put it in. This is not a political statement, but because someone across the aisle, so to speak, proposed it, you cannot simply agree or compromise. The way the new council is operating reminds me of my youngest child, who seems intent on disagreeing with anything an adult says just to assert her space. It would be laughable, except that you're hurting residents in the process, by refusing to acknowledge a factual statement or a good idea just for the sake of having your way. I'm not seeing that mutual respect with the conservative members here, nor do I believe you intend to put the city first. I see theatrical displays of far-right ideals that have no place here. I would like to flag that now, while you're early in your elected seats, and let you know that we are taking note whether we speak here in front of you or not. Our city housing department, which gave a presentation last week at council member Medina's Ward III meeting, says it will cost $3 million this year to enforce the camping ban. At the same time, that division and the par officer who was there acknowledged that nothing in the camping ordinance will change the homeless situation, because it doesn't address housing or mental health needs, and CDOT's requirement of the seven-day abatement notice means nothing along 225 is going to change. The firing of the police chief was purely a political move that has financial impacts to the city, from sourcing a new chief to a possible lawsuit now for wrongful termination. The new crime ordinance will be similar. Nothing about the past half-century of Aurora has taught you that we need change. Crime and homelessness will continue to get worse, because poverty is getting worse, and you will continue to blame it on a minority on council. Please do better as leaders of this city. Thank you.
Candace Bailey, followed by Katie. Followed by Carlton Kulig.
Man, it's been a long time since I've been up here. I don't have a nice, pretty speech or anything like that, I am a bit frustrated. And Steve Mike Kaufman, you still got the gavel still stuck up. Jim, you definitely don't have, that was definitely a politically hit move that you did on the chief of police, and you're a for that. I just wanted to say that to you and everything. Ms. Piggy, you're a too. Yeah, I'm gonna say, yeah, yeah, you're a too. Not only that, if we are going to go back to the old way that Aurora Police is going to be policing, I'm going to be watching each and every one of your officers, and I'm going to hold them accountable. You understand? I want to make that, you can make that a public record. And this also, this also, they got on his chin right here, that like to smile and like to advocate for police and stuff like that, and at the end of the day, you actually forgot about the citizen that actually pay your salary. So, at the end of the day, the council people that know who I hold truly in my heart, you know who you are, the rest of you are all pieces of.
So are you!
That's fine, and that's fine, but at the end of the day, it's my, that, my community that looked like me, who are dying in the community because of police officers. So, new chief of police, I'm going to give you a fair shake, but I will be watching you too, and I hope you do do a good job, and I will give you that honor to at least give you the benefit of the doubt to do a good job. But Jim, I did used to like you, and I thought you did actually have integrity, but the way you did the chief, and trust me, me and the chief had back and forth, we did not agree on everything, but at the end of the day, she did what she was supposed to do, and that was to serve the community. And that, and that at the end of the day, that's how I feel, and I digress, and...
Were we timewise?
Carlton Kulig, followed by Aaron Futrell.
Well, talk about a hard act to follow. My name is Carlton Kulig, I'm a retired teacher. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I have no profanity in my speech, so you can open your ears back up. I just have one question, it's for Daniel Jurenski. And by the way, I spoke to several of your fellow students at Overland High School, and the question to you is, recently you called for the former police captain, you called her trash. And the question to you is, if it takes one to know one, and you are white, does this make you white trash? And if you would address that to the public at any time of your convenience? Thank you.
Aaron Futrell, followed by Gary Beasley.
I appreciate everything that you guys do. Some of you guys know who I am. When we talk about ancestry and public decorum, my grandmother, the late, great, honorable and the mostly sat up there and created policies for you guys. And one of the things that she taught me, and I remember to this day, is to see the change you want to be, or to be the change you want to see, you have to be it. And this was after I got kicked out of Buckingham Mall because of a racist cop. And Chief Vanessa Wilson, former chief, was doing her best to basically eradicate the mistakes of the past. And her firing, her termination was a great misjustice, especially when you guys asked for community involvement in the hiring of a chief who was going to restore our trust in our community. As an Overland alumni, '96/97, also went to the manor, I've got to be honest, I'm disappointed in Council Member Jurenski. I know you know a family member of mine, and I know you could do better than the comments that you've made. You guys don't have to always agree, but that's political discourse, because when the appropriate political discourse happens, and you guys agree to disagree, there's great things that happen in the city of Aurora. I'm disappointed in the city manager for basically cowering to political pressure, because honestly, last week we were talking about the Oscars, and the political theater last week would have won the award instead of Will Smith. So honestly, I'm coming up here and asking you guys to basically involve the community in the hiring of the next chief. Don't allow our voices not to be heard. As an African-American man who is beginning to trust the police after seeing the police abuse their power and brutalize friends, I've heard the stories. I understand both sides, whether people resist, or whether people, I understand both sides as my degree is in criminal justice with the minor in human services. So I understand the good and the bad. Chief Wilson was trying to get us to the good, and I hope the next chief will continue that work, especially when you guys said it was about community. If it was truly about community, last week would not have happened.
Gary Beasley.
Yes, my name is Gary Beasley. I was born and raised about two miles from here, 75 years ago, and I have not prepared a speech, I'm not a very good speaker, but I have, I'm a neighborhood... a speech, I'm not a very good speaker, but I have, I'm a neighborhood watch par office, neighborhood watch coordinator in Par Area Eight. I live in Ward Three. I've gone to the Citizens Police Academy, given by former District Attorney Brockler. You may have heard something about him, but I also have gone to the Aurora Fire Department Citizens Academy, and I graduated from the Citizens Police Academy 10 years ago, maybe? I've been on three or four ride-alongs, and I would not trade any -- trade places with any officer that we have on our force today. That includes Chief Wilson. I really just want to know what the budget is for finding a new chief. Was that any part of the consideration in firing, pretty much, just momentarily? I mean, was there -- how much thought was given into firing the chief, anyway? So, basically, I just really want to know what did happen. How do we find out? Do we talk to our council members? Do we talk to the mayor, the city manager, the attorney? Who's going to give us all of the correct information? So anyway, thank you.
And we do have one individual on the public call in line. Council, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Good evening. I am reading this for an Aurora police officer who is in fear of retaliation. As an Aurora resident and a member of the APD, I am demanding the immediate resignation of Danielle Jurinsky, Dustin Zavonic, and Steve Sundberg. Shame on you for meeting with an incredibly small group of APD members, two included a division chief, a commander, and a captain, to plan out the removal of a highly effective police chief. These APD members were mad that they and others were held accountable for their behavior unbecoming of an officer. They wanted Chief Wilson out so they could move themselves in and return to the brushing under the rug behaviors. One of the core four values in Aurora is integrity. These members of the APD, as well as Jurinsky and Zavonic, have no integrity at all. They should be fired or demoted immediately. Those few APD members do not represent the majority of the APD family. We are appalled that the members of the Aurora City Council acted as bullies to force the city manager to fire the chief just because a very small group wanted that. Holding officers accountable has actually made the job of an APD officer easier in the community. People know that the officers serving them are officers of integrity and honesty, so there is less hostility from the public. Our jobs have become easier, and it's become harder for those who have no integrity. The police officers in Aurora do not need a cheerleader. If they are unable to do their jobs without the consent cheering from a police chief, they should leave. We have one job as a police officer, and that is to serve our community. Does the fire chief have to praise firefighters for doing their jobs in order to keep his job? Jurinsky and Zavonic, you do not represent the citizens of Aurora. You do not represent the members of the APD who have integrity. Officers are tired of Jurinsky trying to buy them with gift cards. It is insulting, and it needs to stop. It is time to resign immediately so we can get our department back. You have done enough damage. Thank you for your time.
That's all.
Adoption of the agenda?
Motion, Zavonic.
It's been moved by Councilmember Zavonic, seconded by...
Jurinsky.
Councilmember Jurinsky to adopt the agenda. Discussion? There's seen no discussion. Call for the question on the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor votes yes.
Councilmember Sundberg and Councilmember Jurinsky, we don't have your vote. The motion passes unanimously to adopt the agenda.
Adoption of the consent calendar, item number 10A through 10F. Councilmember McConnell?
Yeah, also moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember McConnell, seconded by...
Mayor Second.
Seconded by, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lawson to adopt the consent calendar, item number 10A through 10F. Discussion?
Mayor Jurinsky.
Mayor.
Councilmember Coons and Councilmember Jurinsky.
Just, there's a waiver of reconsideration on 10E. Oh, 10C, sorry, I bet 10C.
Okay, I'm sorry, you want to remove the waiver of reconsideration?
No, I just wanted to make sure that was included in the motion.
Okay, very well.
And Councilmember and Mayor, there's a few waivers of reconsideration. They're listed on the agenda for each item. So 10C, 10E, and 10F.
And that needs to be included in the motion?
Yes.
Oh, very well. Councilmember McConnell?
Sir, Mayor, I will amend my motion to approve the consent calendar with a waiver of reconsideration for 10C, 10D, 10E, and 10F.
And who's -- is Councilmember Jurinsky, were you a second?
Mayor, I would be a second.
Oh, Councilmember Lawson was the second. Do you concur with that?
I concur with that, and I'll be a second.
Very well. Then the question, is there further discussion? There's seen none. Question before us, I'm sorry. Councilmember Jurinsky.
I just wanted to point out that tonight, and on the last council meeting, too, for the consent calendar, all of these very, very large contracts, every single one of them are companies outside of Aurora. I just want to put that out there. I don't understand why there are no contracts awarded to Aurora businesses, and why not on any of these, we can't try to keep money inside Aurora in Aurora businesses. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember McConnell?
Thank you, sir. We've asked about that in the past, and the short answer is that there are not companies large enough or with the qualifications in the city necessarily to kind of, you know, award contracts locally. I would like to see that change. I think we have an opportunity for local economic development. Part of what I was trying to do with some of the resolutions, or a minister resolution that we discussed at our last meeting, so happy to talk more about that in the future.
Further discussion? There's seen none. Question before us is the adoption of the consent calendar, items number 10A through 10F, with respective waivers of reconsideration. Call for the question.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor votes yes.
The motion passes unanimously to approve the consent calendar.
The time is now 7:29. The council will stand in recess until 7:35 to give the staff an opportunity to make another announcement for the call line. Council is in recess.
Members of the public who would like to speak on a resolution or ordinance and have not already spoken to an operator, press 3 before the item is called by the clerk. For those watching on Channel Eight, call 855-695-3475 to be connected, and then press star 3. Council is taking a short break to allow any additional speakers to sign up. Please be patient and stay on the line until the operator is able to take down your message.
Regular meeting of the Aurora City Council is called back to order. Item number 11A through 11H can move forward with a single motion? Is there a motion to move item 11A through 11H forward?
Mayor.
Councilmember McConnell.
I would move to, I make a motion rather, to move 11A through 11E forward and 11G through 11H forward. I have a constituent who wants to ask a couple of questions about 11F.
Okay, so I'm sorry, the motion is to move?
11A through 11E and 11H, I'm sorry, F, sorry, G and H.
Okay.
All sans 11F.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McConnell to move item 11A through 11E and 11G through 11H.
Mayor Kaufman, is there any way that I can pull 11C just because I have a couple of questions?
Sure, okay, very well. 11C.
I should consider that friendly.
Can you?
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry. No, you're good, you're good.
I mean, can you, Councilmember McConnell, can you revise your motion?
Yes, so I'll revise the motion, that'll be, I'll move 11A, B, D, E, G and H.
Very well, it's been moved by Councilmember McConnell and seconded by Councilmember Lawson.
I'll second it, Councilmember, Mayor Kaufman.
Discussion? I see no discussion, question before us is the adoption of item number 11A, 11A, 11B, 11D, 11E, 11G and 11H, discussion? I see no discussion, call for the question.
The motion passes to approve the stated resolutions.
With the clerk please read the title to item number 11C.
Item 11C is Resolution 202273, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado approving the IGA between the City of Aurora and the Colorado Department of Transportation for the Parker Quincy Smokey Hill Intersection Improvement Project.
A brief presentation by staff.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council, my name is Matt Kasikowski, I am the project delivery manager for the Public Works Department. Let me sure I got the right one here. The project at the intersection of Parker Quincy and Smokey Hill has been in progress for some time. It actually began as a study in 2016 and it was included in the 2016 to 2019 Dr. Cog Tip Cycle as a study to determine what the improvements would be. It then came back in the current Dr. Cog Tip Cycle, which is a grant funding vessel, and it was awarded design and construction funds in the 2020 to 2023 cycle. And that IGA for that funding of that design and construction is what's before City Council for consideration this evening. The project will provide multiple operational and pedestrian safety improvements at the intersections of Parker Quincy and Smokey Hill. There's a visual exhibit of the improvements in your packet on pages 351, 352 and 353 for reference. This project included a significant amount of overmatch from the city from a funding standpoint, which has allowed us to use the local funds to progress the design and saving the federal funds for construction, which is why the project is just now completing preliminary design and moving into final design as the IGA is coming before you now. And the projects, for the project schedule, as I stated, we are moving into final design this summer and with right-of-way acquisition to continue through the end of this year and then construction of the intersection improvements, summer of next year. And with that, I would ask if council has any question?
Questions of staff?
Mayor.
Councilmember Lawson.
Thank you for that summary. I don't have any issues with, I think it's a good design and it's needed. I guess what I wanted to know is what is going to be the proactive messaging that you're going to do to the people that live in that area, because that's a very congested area. And I just want to know how are you going to be, what are going to be the interruptions? How are you going to get information around to that community? Because what I'm seeing or possibly could happen is people are going to drive through the communities, which is going to cause some, you know, some traffic backup in a lot of these neighborhoods, because it is a very congested area already. So I'm just, I know it's a year off, but I'm just wondering, is there any plan or are you planning of how you're going to message this to the community and what's going to be the interruption possibly? Is that, how are you going to do that? Has that been thought about for this project?
That's a good question, and for a project of this size, what we typically do and what we would do for this project is to require the contract, the successful contractor, to have a public information officer component of their project. And then that public information officer would act on behalf of the project to establish an informational website, a mailing list, and as well as work with city communications staff to get messaging on city social media and message boards. I would also add, and that's kind of just specific for a large project, I would also add just for any change in traffic patterns that are associated with construction, variable message boards, which are the light-up message boards on the side of the road, are required for, I believe, two weeks prior to, prior to that change in traffic pattern.
Mayor, can I just do a quick follow-up?
Please proceed.
How early will you be doing this messaging with this public information? Like I said, a year comes pretty fast, but I'm pretty sure people, to prepare and to get it out, so the messaging in that surrounding community, which is filled with development and housing and all of that, how far in advance will you do this, the messaging piece or possibility?
So the design project that's going through now has three public meetings as part of its normal progression. I believe they've held the first two of those and there will be, there will be a third public meeting as the, the design is finalized. And then, once we turn kind of the reins over to the successful contractor and their public information officer, that would be one of the first action items that they took on once they were awarded the contract. So I would say, with a project of this size, it takes about a month to get through contracting and mobilization, so we would ask that contractor to get going on that as quickly as possible so that we could get as much of that month as possible.
Thank you very much.
Further questions of staff?
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
Sorry, so just, I know I did ask these questions in the Transportation Committee meeting and I will not be as long-winded in them there, but what, if anything, has been done to try to address the issues for folks in the Cherry Creek Racket Club neighborhood who have one entrance and exit off of Quincy and who already have difficulty getting out onto Quincy from their neighborhood? And especially knowing that traffic is going to be moving faster through that area, which is great for everyone that's in that traffic, but really creates some concerns and some issues for that neighborhood.
With that, I would defer to the city's traffic manager.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council, thank you Councilmember Coombs for the question. So when this project was originally in the study phase, there were different alternatives that were looked at and public feedback was taken into consideration. And then, you know, as part of that, looking at different alternatives, we also have to look at, you know, what, what the area already has been developed for and what is possible and what isn't possible to do. And so, as far as the racket club to the south, they do only have the one main entrance and exit off of Quincy and Atchison for their development. We've looked at different options for access connection points and they're just really not feasible without getting a significant amount of private property or additional easements. So in the scope of a grant project, it would be very tough to accommodate that. We have also, I think as all of you have heard, done a pretty extensive study to determine if a signal could be placed at Quincy and Atchison and just found through our detailed traffic modeling and studying of the area that a signal there really wouldn't be functional and wouldn't improve their situation, unfortunately. So we have looked at multiple different things, definitely understand and sympathize with their struggles, but didn't have a better solution than what is presented. And I will say that, you know, even with our improvements, it'll make traffic operate better along Quincy, but I don't know that I would consider it, you know, perfect level of service, free-flowing, there will still be gaps in traffic as there are today, it won't be impossible to get out, I would say. Thank you.
I have a question, and that is that, a very difficult situation for the racket club, and I see only two points of potential egress, and that is through the townhome development, which they're not going to, they're not going to let that happen. But, but there would be another one potentially, and that is through the, the shopping center. If that could, and so if the, I mean, if, if we could reach out somehow, I guess on behalf of the racket club to try to negotiate an egress point, I, I wouldn't think that that would complicate things for the shopping center. In fact, I would think that increased traffic through their center might, might be a plus for some of the businesses there, but it's, it's, it's just a horrific situation. And it reminds me of the, the East Bank debate where the developer was at the end, forced to amend their site plan to allow the egress through their shopping center of the Pier Point VII development. And so, I, I would think that that would be the only plausible action. And so, I would love it if, I don't know what the process would be for the city to intervene in what is, what essentially would be a private matter with city approval, but is that a possibility?
I think that's definitely something we can look into in more detail. I, I do think though, that it probably is not feasible at this point to include that in the grant-funded project.
Sure, I understand.
But I think that's something that we could look into more. The East Bank site, as you, as you all know and are very familiar with, is, was a redevelopment, so whenever a site comes in for redevelopment, obviously as, as city staff, we can make requirements as part of the site. I think we have a lot less leverage when it's not redeveloping, but we could open up those conversations and go from there.
Thank you. Further questions of staff? I see none. Motion on the adoption of 11C?
Mayor.
Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. Move to approve 11C.
Removed by Councilmember McConnell, seconded by?
Mayor, second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lawson to approve item number 11C. Discussion? See no further discussion, question before us is the adoption of 11C, call for the question.
The motion passes to approve Resolution 202273.
With the clerk now please read the title of item number 11F.
Item 11F is Resolution 202276, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado approving the 2022 Memorandum of Understanding for the United States Marshal Service Fugitive Task Force for Non-Federal Agencies.
Brief presentation by staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Acting Chief Chris Jewell. The purpose of this MOU is to clarify those opportunities when we have joint operations with the United States Marshal Service in conjunction with the Police Department. You might recall, in last year, we had Operation Restore, so that was a joint operation where we recovered, we arrested over 100 fugitives and recovered numerous weapons and also motor vehicles in that operation. So it's worked very well in the past. That was an emergency MOU when we conducted that operation. This MOU is just putting that groundwork in place in the event we plan future operations later this year. So, the MOU does a couple of things, it clarifies some jurisdictional boundaries for us so that we, our officers that are assigned to that operation can, if we track a fugitive outside of Aurora, for instance, they can cross into Denver and still have full authority under that MOU. It also provides for some reimbursement to the Police Department from the Marshal Service with regard to either overtime monies, it can also provide equipment, it also provides access to certain types of data that we wouldn't otherwise have access to as well. So again, this is just laying the groundwork for this year in the event we do conduct another one of those operations.
Questions of staff on item number 11F?
Mayor.
Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir, and I just want to start by saying I support this resolution. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions that came from a constituent, so if you'll bear with me here. The first question that they asked is what has changed between this 2020 MOU and previous ones that we've signed on to?
I'm sorry, sir, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, what has changed between this MOU and then, let's say, the previous one that we had?
I'm not aware of any changes.
I can speak to that. Good evening, Council, this one is a little bit more comprehensive. As Chief Jewell had said, the original MOU was an emergency MOU where the parameters were a little bit briefer in terms of what we were doing. This flushes out some additional issues that we needed to deal with, with body worn camera operation and just some functional and policy issues that are included in this, and it's a little bit more comprehensive.
Thank you. Mayor, I have a couple more.
Please proceed.
She asks, has there been a problem using this authority to track immigrants who do not have violent criminal charges against them?
No, so with regard to the types of people we go after in these MOUs, they are, we have to apply to the Marshal Service with those warrants, and the Marshal Supervisor has to approve those warrants. So these warrants are for violent drug charges, they are for felonies, they're crimes against persons, they're crimes involving weapons, failure to register as, you know, sexual predator, things like that. So the boundaries of the type of people we go after are very, you know, strict and well outlined ahead of time.
Thank you. I do have a couple more, Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. She also asks, she's interested in the portion that says that expenses may be reimbursed pending availability of funds, she's wondering about the effect this may have on APD's budget, and she specifically references pages 490 and 491 of the packet.
So as I understand it, the monies that we would, the costs we would incur would be reimbursed to police department through the Marshal Service?
Okay. Let me see here, you already touched on body worn cameras, and then use of force, the Department of Justice Policy Statement of May 16, 2011 requires Aurora approval, does this comply with any and all updated Aurora and Colorado requirements?
Correct, so the MOU specifically outlines that our officers adhere to our use of force policies, we're not subject to anybody else's use of force policies, it may differ from those.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Further discussion, whoa, I'm sorry, did we, a motion on, are further questions of staff? I see none, motion is in order on item number 11F.
Mayor.
Councilmember McConnell.
Move to approve 11F.
Moved by Councilmember McConnell, seconded by?
Savonic.
Seconded by Councilmember Savonic to approve item number 11F. Discussion? See no discussion, the question before us is the adoption of item number 11F, call for the question.
The motion passes to approve Resolution 202276.
With the clerk now please read the title to item number 11I.
Item 11I is Resolution 202279, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado to amend the rules of order and procedure for the Aurora, Colorado City Council regarding the council calendar.
Brief presentation by staff.
Yes, Your Honor, this matter changes the council rules for voting on the calendar. It changes it from a unanimous vote to a two-thirds vote. So if, if somebody's having connection problems or if there's an illness and they're not, you don't have a full council, you can still change the council rules.
But I believe, if I'm standing corrected, that the threshold vote to amend the rules is simple majority?
Correct.
Okay. Motion is in order on item number 11F.
Mayor.
Councilmembers of?
That was me.
Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. Move to approve 11I.
Removed by Councilmember McConnell, seconded by?
Coombs.
Seconded by Councilmember Coombs to approve item number 11F. Discussion? See no discussion, question before us is the adoption of item number 11I, call for the question.
The motion passes with one no from Councilmember Jurinsky to approve Resolution 202279.
Clerk now please read the title to item number 11J.
Item 11J is Resolution 202280, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado expressing the Aurora City Council's support of the First Amendment to the IGA between the City of Aurora, Colorado, acting by and through its utility enterprise in Pioneer Hills Metropolitan District.
Brief presentation by staff.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Sarah Young, Deputy Director of Aurora Water. This is a minor amendment with an IGA we have with Pioneer Hills Metro District. The IGA was originally put in place for them to build the infrastructure or public improvements required for their district. However, it very clearly said that it was not for operation maintenance except for in parks and recreation assets. They've actually come and requested that that be expanded to allow for asset management with a creek that runs through that district, for sediment removal, vegetation removal, debris removal, those types of activities. So we recommend and support that amendment.
Questions of staff? I see none, a motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
Move to approve 11I.
Removed by Councilmember Coombs, seconded by?
Sundberg.
Councilmember Sundberg to approve item number 11I, discussion?
Mayor, this is item 11J.
J.
I'm sorry, 11J, ouch.
Sorry.
Okay, item number 11J, discussion? Seeing no discussion, question before us is the adoption of item number 11J, call for the question.
The motion passes to approve Resolution 202280.
With the clerk now please read the title to item number 11K.
Item 11K is Resolution 202281, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado expressing council's intention that all council appointees, whether department heads or members of boards or commissions, shall be responsible for complying with all city business policy memoranda pertaining to the use and handling of electronic data in any form, to include but not limited to regulated data such as personal identifying and information, criminal justice information, protected health information or payment card information, and the procurement, use and management of technology for city business. All council appointees shall comply with security policies, directives or alerts promulgated by the city's chief information security officer and shall ensure compliance by their respective divisions. And Mayor, we do have one person in the chambers to speak on this item.
Very well, with the individual?
Linda Servie. I guess they are not here.
Very well, brief presentation by staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Scott Newman, I'm the Chief Information Officer here at the City of Aurora. As the resolution states, this resolution will basically consolidate and make our cybersecurity posture for the city a uniform approach, so that all cybersecurity policy, standards of practice and the methodologies that we use to put in controls and mitigations will apply to all divisions across the city regardless of who they may report to.
Questions of staff?
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
Yes, I did receive some questions from a constituent who was just concerned that this might also interfere with release of information, for example, under Cora, and that it might prevent us from having a high level of transparency as a local government. My understanding from reading it is that that's not the case, but I was wondering if staff can comment about whether this would impede in any way the release of information as required by Cora or limit the type of information that could be released for community interest in government transparency.
Thanks, Councilmember Coombs. No, this would not in any way limit the obligations the city has under the Cora or CCIJRA requirements in state law. In fact, it is part of our function to ensure compliance with those laws. We work hand-in-hand with the city attorney's office whenever such requests are received, and we support the various departments such as the city clerk's office, the police records division and others who are responsible for gathering and administering that information and releasing it appropriately as required by law. So this is not in any way, would not interfere with those requirements. This is, simply would make sure that we do a uniform approach in applying those policies consistently across the board.
Further questions? Motion is in order.
Mayor.
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 Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. Move to approve 11K.
It's removed by Councilmember McConnell, seconded by?
Coombs.
Councilmember Coombs to approve item number 11K. Discussion? Seeing none, the question we force is the adoption of item number 11K. Call for the question.
The motion passes to approve Resolution 2022-81.
With clerk, now please read the title to item number 14A.
Mayor, may I read?
Oh, I'm sorry. There will be an announcement for the call-in line. The time is now 8:02. We will, council will stand at recess until 8:07.
Members of the public who would like to speak on an ordinance and have not already spoken to an operator, press star three before the item is called by the clerk. For those watching on Channel 8, call 855-695-3475 to be connected, and then press star three. Council is taking a short break to allow any additional speakers to sign up. Please be patient and stay on the line until the operator is able to take down your information.
Sonia, you have three minutes. Go ahead. Sonia, are you there?
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? My name is Sonia Skakic-Skrum. I live in Aurora. I wanted to make sure that you have the most relevant information needed to make a decision tonight about the minimum distance from existing oil and gas wells for building a new home known as reverse setback. It's being proposed at 150 feet. Some things I think you need to know. The FHA and VA have refused loans for homes located less than 350 feet from industrial operations based on their risk assessment. A huge number of scientific studies have shown that daily exposure to toxic emissions from oil and gas well is linked to much higher rates of serious respiratory, neurologic, cardiovascular disease, and reproductive harms in cancer, especially for children and pregnant women. And the feed risk increased with proximity to the well site. These are serious health harms. They can't be summarized simply due to people's pre-existing health conditions, how it's time they spend outside, etc. But sheer physical threats to safety are straightforward. No one is fireproof or explosion-proof. Oil and gas well sites are subject to rare but seriously high consequence failure events. Explosions, fires, blowback with explosive ejection, etc. The most relevant peer-reviewed science on this is Dr. Haley's comprehensive review, including industry information, information from news reports, etc., and engineering reports. Here's what you need to know regarding their findings. Oil and gas fires burn at temperatures exceeding 3,500 degrees Fahrenheit. They're known to cause blister burns within 22 seconds at a distance of 350 feet. Explosive ejection of oil and gas, and then toxic waste water, equipment, etc. occurs up to 900 feet or more. One Colorado incident showered oil and gas products 2,000 feet to a schoolyard. Explosions have been known to create craters of 750 feet. That's the documented physics of such incidents. No one, no matter how-
Sonia, your time is up.
Is it?
Questions from council members to staff?
Mayor.
Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. If, I would just like someone to clarify. What is the distance that we require from oil and gas activity from residential developments in our oil and gas manual for new wells?
Mayor, through you. That would be a requirement from, from the oil and gas manual, and Colin is here to address that.
Good evening. My name's Colin Brown. I'm the senior planner in the oil and gas division. To answer your question, there is not a, a setback distance listed in the oil and gas manual. We refer back to the COGCC rules, the Colorado Oil and Gas Commission.
All right. Do you know what that distance is offhand from the COGCC?
Right now, new well sites need to be a minimum of 2,000 feet away from residential units, schools, hospitals, things like that.
Okay.
Further questions for staff? Further questions to staff? Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed, and a motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember McConnell.
I would move to amend that setback to coincide with the COGCC from 350 feet to 2,000. Is that possible?
Well, is that, we've got the operator agreement. For those that are not under the operator agreement, is that possible?
So, Mayor, through you. This is the reverse setback, and the reason why it's in the UDO is because it relates to residential development encroaching upon existing
Right.
oil and gas facilities. So if you were to wish to adjust that number, which is 150 as proposed, that would be, I believe, the prerogative of, of the city council.
Yeah. Mayor?
Very well. Well, I think you have to move the ordinance first and then move to amend.
Okay. So, all right. So procedurally, Mayor, I would like to move 14A.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember McConnell, seconded by?
Coombs.
Seconded by Councilmember Coombs to move out of number 14A. Then go forward with your amendment.
All right. So Mayor, I would like to amend the reverse setback to, from 350 feet to 2,000 feet. Well, the language I would like to use is to coincide with the COGCC's recommendations, if that makes sense.
Just a point of clarification on that. The COGCC setback is on oil and gas operators. This reverse setback would be on developers, so wouldn't, wouldn't be oil and gas operators.
Okay. I, I understand that. The, the goal of this would be to get out, get away from that distance that the caller mentioned, that blast radius, potential crater, crater radius, etc.
So, I'm sorry, could you restate your amendment?
Yeah. So it would be to move the 350-foot setback to 2,000 feet.
It's been moved by Councilmember McConnell, seconded by?
Coombs.
Seconded by Councilmember Coombs. Discussion on the McConnell amendment?
Mayor.
Councilmember Kerensky.
Can I just hear from staff on that? Your, your thoughts, your opinion, moving it from 350 feet to 2,000?
So, this is all about the order and, and who it applies to. So, has been stated the COGCC will not allow a new well to be placed within 2,000 feet of an existing home. What the 150-foot reverse setback means is that if there's a well that goes in first, the zoning code will not allow a single-family home to come within 150 feet of that existing well. But you could have a home within that 2,000-foot setback that, that the, the well wouldn't be allowed to if the home was first, if the home is coming in second. Do you understand the, the difference there? So if the well comes in first, and then a homeowner or a home builder later wants to come in and put the home, knowing that the well is there, they can be within that 2,000-foot setback. The reverse setback, as has been noted, applies to home builders, developers, and the like. And so, it is, it, you know, 2,000 is going to be much more impactful than the 150 feet. As Brandon had noted, the 150 feet was something that council had passed a number of years ago. And staff is, is fully supportive of for a number of reasons. One, I think first and foremost, we really, we have some cases where we have closed wells that years and years ago went into place. And we've, as we've gone out to inspect those wells, we have found that sometimes we don't have the clearance that we would like. We would like about 100, 150 feet around a well for once it's closed in to be able to do any close-in activities and inspections around that, which is why staff supports the 150 feet, as Brandon has noted. I think beyond that, it really gets into a council policy decision for land uses, what you all would like to do. And that's, it really is a council policy decision as to how impactful you want that reverse setback to be, knowing that the reverse setback is primarily impacting landowners and future developers.
I stand corrected. I had mentioned that it, that, that the operator agreement was integrated into this. It is not. It doesn't affect the industry, oil and gas industry. It affects home builders and potentially developers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
But it's only residential sites, correct? It's not commercial.
Brandon, how widely is the, does it apply? Does it apply just to residential, or is it any occupied structure?
Identifies residential lot.
Very well. Okay. Further discussion on the McConnell amendment?
Mayor.
Mayor.
Councilmember Zavonic and Councilmember Coombs.
Yeah, I, I, I think that this type of change, when you're going from 150 to 2,000 feet, could have just devastating impacts to, to the developers and to the development community of our, in our city. And I just think that throwing it out here without having any sort of idea of what that impact would look like would be a terrible idea. And so I assume we're going to oppose, vote on this at some point. But I can't imagine that this would be a good decision for us to make right here on the fly.
Very well. Further discussion?
Mayor.
Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Coombs.
Oh, that's okay. So, I mean, to that point, there's been extensive discussion and research about the impacts of oil and gas on people's health and safety, which is the purpose of making this type of proposal. And much of that was already cited by the individual that called in. But my question actually was to staff. Is that 150 feet currently proposed in the UDO from the well pad site or from the actual drilling location?
So that setback's actually going to be measured from the equipment. So that could be the wellhead, a tank, a separator. It will not be measured from the disturbance area, so not the well pad.
Changing the numbers. Let me, Councilmember Coombs, any further questions right now?
No, thank you.
Very well. I would like to ask the city attorney a question that, would this constitute a taking to the degree that home builders have already purchased lots with the understanding that they will develop properties that they will no longer develop, be able to, to build homes after the passage of this, should have passed?
Whether it's, either distance, whether it's 150 or whether it's 2,000, that's one of the questions. The, the consideration here is it's a health-safety issue. So that, that reduces the impact to the taken.
Litigation risk. Very well. Further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. And I do acknowledge that is a large change. But I do want to point out that it is already prohibited for a new well to come within 2,000 feet of an existing home for health and safety reasons. So I don't see why we would allow a new home to come within 150 feet of an area that has been deemed hazardous and, you know, adverse to public health and safety. So I'd like to see those two rules be consistent. I don't really care who got there first. I think it's in the best interest of public health.
Further discussion on the McConnell amendment?
Mayor Sundberg.
Councilmember Sundberg.
As staff mentioned, how would this affect a closed well that's capped? And not to develop within that range of 2,000 feet could be catastrophic to a lot of plans. So I think with the seriousness of this topic, we need to discuss further with more expert advice.
Just a point of clarification. So, Councilmember McConnell, this would apply, your amendment would apply to closed versus active sites?
Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. If, if it is safe to be within 150 feet of a closed well, I'm happy to keep that there. But I, you know, when we're talking about new wells, new activity, I think we should probably err on the side of caution, follow the COGCC's guidelines.
So closed and active?
Yeah.
Very well. Further discussion? Seeing none, the question before us is the adoption of the McConnell amendment to, item number 14A. Further discussion? Seeing none, question before us is the adoption of the McConnell amendment to item number 14A. Call for the question.
Mayor Kaufman, you can make the tie?
Well, I do believe that this item deserves further discussion. And, and I think that we should have it set for a study session. I would like to know more about it before making such a monumental decision that, given the fact that we are short of housing in this city and that, that would preclude the new homes or new multifamily development. And so, and I want further discussion or exploration about closed versus active wells. So, Mayor votes no.
The motion does not pass with a tie vote. Four no votes from Councilmembers Zavonic, Gardner, Kerensky, Sundberg, and Mayor Kaufman.
With click, now please read the title. I'm number, oh, I'm sorry, we are to the, we are to the item number 14A itself. Further discussion on the adoption of item number 14A?
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
I'd like to propose an amendment that the 150 feet be from the disturbance area or well pad site rather than from the drilling equipment.
Can you restate that again, please?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to propose an amendment to this ordinance that the 150-foot reverse setback apply to the well pad site, which staff also referred to as the disturbance area, rather than from the drilling equipment. And that is because that, that whole site, that whole area can have that adverse impact on health and safety. But what that does do is, but what it doesn't do is extend it as far as 2,000 feet, which enough of council members have risen in opposition to. But it still increases the protectiveness of the, of the requirement in code of that 150-foot setback.
It's been, it's been moved by Councilmember Coombs, seconded by?
Second.
I'm sorry. Councilmember McConnell?
Yes, sir.
Question to staff. Could you please comment on, on the proposed amendment?
I think we could be in support of that. If anything, we would take a kind of a balanced view of that, extending it to be measured from the edge of the disturbance area in the well pad. Yes, it would increase that protective area, but wouldn't have as drastic of an impact as 2,000 feet.
Further discussion on the Coombs amendment?
Quick point of clarification. Colin, could you help us with this? So often when the drilling's going in, the footprint's a little larger, and then once the wells are drilled in, they shrink the footprint. So we, I would assume this, the setback from the boundary would be from?
Yes. So as Jason stated, generally when the wells are first being drilled, the pad is much larger, say anywhere from 10 to 15 acres. Once those wells are drilled and they are producing, that pad is then in the interim reclamation stage. That usually, the pad gets shrunk down anywhere from 50 to 60, 75%. So it would be a smaller pad size.
So just for clarification, I think we would, from a staff perspective, go with that smaller pad size?
Interim reclamation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coombs?
Yep, that sounds okay to me.
Very well. Councilmember McConnell? Further discussion on the Coombs amendment? Seeing none, the question before us is the adoption of the Coombs amendment to item number 14A. Call for the question.
Mayor Kaufman, you can vote to make the tie?
Mayor votes no. I, I would like to not make this decision without having a discussion and study session on this, and I will set that in the agenda for a study session. And so it will go through the process, the entire process. And I think that policies of this significant deserve to be vetted more carefully. Item number 14B. With click, please read the title to item number 14B.
Mayor, do we need to vote on item 14A? We've just voted on the two amendments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Ouch. It's not even late, and I'm in trouble. Okay. Further discussion on item number 14A?
Mayor Kaufman, can I get a clarification from you? So, if you want this to go in a study session and we're going to pass this?
The, the amendment will go into, the, the topics covered in the two amendments that were offered will go into a study session. Not, not the item number 14A in and of itself.
Okay. So I'm just trying to understand what I'm, what I'm, you're trying to put this, you're going to put the amendments through the study session? Because what I'm trying to understand, we're gonna, this is probably going to pass, but we have that one section where there are some, some differences here. So I'm just-
I think both, both amendments failed.
Okay, but we're gonna vote on something for the UDO. It has multiple things in there. And I'm just asking, there's issues, you want to bring these, this, that section to a study session, but we're going to be voting on the whole thing. So I'm just trying to understand clarification if some of-
The changes to the reverse setback will, will go, will go in the study session. We'll have
Okay.
a full discussion on, on both amendments that were offered today.
Okay. Yeah.
Further discussion on item number 14A? Seeing none, the question before us is the adoption of item number 14A. Call for the question.
The motion passes with seven yes votes, two no votes from Councilmember Coombs and Councilmember Murillo to approve ordinance 202217.
Well, clerk, now please read the, the title to item number 14B.
Item 14B is, is ordinance 202218, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado, vacating two portions of the public right-of-way for Gun Club Road located between the East 26th Avenue and East 38th Avenue and between East 38th Place and East 42nd Place, or East 42nd Avenue, City of Aurora, County of Adams, State of Colorado.
Brief presentation by staff.
Good evening, council. Debbie Bickmeyer, Senior Planner with Planning and Development Services. The applicant Fairfield Woods, PC proposes to vacate two segments of Gun Club Road located adjacent to the east side of E-470 Highway between 26th Avenue and 42nd Avenue. Gun Club Road historically provided access to the former E-470 toll facility, which has now been incorporated into the larger Aurora Highlands master plan. North-south access is now provided by Main Street just to the east of Gun Club Road. The proposed vacation is to support future development in the Aurora Highlands along the E-470 corridor. Staff finds the proposed right-of-way vacation meets the approval criteria found in Section 146-5.4.2.2B.3C and will not restrict access to any parcels or reduce the quality of public service to any adjacent property.
Questions to staff? Seeing none, a motion is in order?
Mayor.
Councilmember Medina.
Motion to approve 14B.
It's moved by Councilmember Medina, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Zavonic to approve item number 14. I'm sorry, who was it? Councilmember McConnell.
Yes.
Seconded by Councilmember McConnell to approve item number 14B. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, the question before us is the adoption of item number 14B. Call for the question.
The motion passes to approve ordinance 202218.
Clerk, now please read the title to item number 14C.
Item 14C is ordinance 202219, an ordinance of the City of Aurora, Colorado, excluding certain property from the boundaries of Parkside at City Center Business Improvement District.
Brief presentation on item number 14C.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Wishmeier, the city controller. And this item is for an ordinance to exclude certain residential property from the Parkside at City Center Business Improvement District. The Parkside at City Center bid was formed a few years ago with the, along with the Parkside at City Center Metro District. And the bid was facilitating the commercial development, and the Metro District facilitated the residential development. The condominium declaration for the multi-use building has been recorded. And as a result of that, we can now move forward with excluding from the bid that multifamily residential unit, actually the apartments, that are in the upper floors of that multi-use building. Additionally, the Parkside bid bonds, which were issued back in 2019, that debt is not secured by this residential property that's being excluded. Thank you.
Questions to staff? Seeing none, a motion is in order? Motion is in order to approve, adopt item number 14C.
Mayor.
Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. Move to approve 14C?
Moved by Councilmember McConnell, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lawson to approve item number 14C. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, question before us is adoption of item number 14C. Call for the question.
The motion passes to approve ordinance 202219.
Clerk, now please read the title to item number 15A.
Item 15A is ordinance 202216, finalizing ordinance of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado, amending Article II, Section 130 of the City Code, exempting diapers from sales and use tax.
Let me defer, a brief presentation by Councilmember Gardner, or you can defer to staff?
And Mayor, I'm sorry, we do have one individual on the call-in line.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just provide a brief-
Susan, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yes, my, I, I have a question. How long will the tax be in effect? And how, is it for all, every one of, everybody who needs it? Because we have a lot of single parents, men and women, who this could really assist. We have teachers that are like that. We have a lot of people. So I don't recall if there was any problem with it last time, but how long, I hope it's more than a year, because that's not going to cut it. We give, we give buildings in 25 years exemption. So can you tell me how long the exemption's going to be?
Councilmember Gardner, you are now recognized, and I'm sure you could answer the question.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you to the caller. Part of my presentation, I will answer those questions, hopefully the caller's still tuning in. As far as the length of the exemption, so this ordinance would exempt diapers, both infant diapers and adult incontinence products from sales tax collection permanently. So the only way they would become subject to sales and use tax in the future is if a future council changed this ordinance. However, the, the kind of the things that have changed since this was first presented at study session from last council meeting, from the first reading, I had let everyone know at the last council meeting that this sales and use tax exemption for both diapers and menstrual products had passed the state legislature. And since the last council meeting, it is, or I should say the Colorado House, and since the last council meeting, it has now passed the Senate Committee and passed with bipartisan support, both in the House and the Senate. So that, the state will be exempting these products from sales tax collection. But, you know, kind of backing out a little bit bigger picture, last year obviously ran an ordinance to exempt diaper, or menstrual products from sales tax exemption. And this is a companion ordinance that, you know, really helps families in our city, as the caller observed, you know, both those with infants and then also adult diapers as well, incontinence products. And so this really does have a wide-ranging benefit in our city. Of course, like I said, the state legislature is moving towards exempting these products as well as the statewide level. And this would really make Aurora leader, as we'd be the first city to exempt both diapers and menstrual products from sales tax collection. That is really all I have, since we've kind of talked about this several times now, but would ask for a yes vote.
Motion is in order?
Mayor.
Councilmember Gardner.
Motion to approve item 15A.
It's been moved by Councilmember Gardner, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McConnell to approve item number 15A. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Zavonic.
So I'm going to make one last appeal to my colleagues. I totally understand the desire to try to help our residents who are struggling with higher costs. Everything is more expensive. Housing has gone up, whether you rent or you own. And that was made worse by the largest tax increase in Colorado history, passing just a couple of years ago with the repeal of Gallagher. And that's going to continue to drive up housing, housing costs. Food's more expensive, household goods, services, all are more expensive as a result of inflation. We're paying more for our utilities. You go and fill your gas tank up, and it's double the cost it was just a couple of years ago. There seems to be no end to the upward pressure on the cost of living in our state. My hope is that instead of creating yet another carve-out in our tax code, that we would look at a way to have a comprehensive, across-the-board reduction. They would do two things. One, it would allow our residents to keep more money in their pocket. But two, it could make our city more competitive. If our sales tax rate across the board is lower than our neighbors, it's better for our, there are more people are going to shop here, more people are going to dine here. It's better for our businesses, it's better for our employees, and it's better for our city. And so I understand, and I truly do sympathize with the desire to try to lower the cost of living- do sympathize with the desire to try to lower the cost of living for our residents, but I don't believe that this is good policy. It might be good politics, maybe, but I think it's bad, bad policy, and we have an opportunity, I think, to stop these carve-outs and instead do some sort of comprehensive across-the-board cut that will actually provide relief for our residents. So with, I would urge a no vote on this ordinance.
Further discussion on item number 15A?
Mayor.
Councilmember Sundberg.
I came across a list of what the city has already exempted in tax, and if I could just read it real quick, I'll go through it pretty quickly. Menstrual care products, health and athletic club memberships, precious metal bullion and collector coins, short-term on-premise rental, untangible personal property, laundromat, car wash, admissions to a school event, sales benefiting a school, food for home consumption except candy and soda, food purchased with funds provided by a federal nutritional assistance program, manufacturing equipment, commercial packaging material, let's see, recreation services by tax-exempt organizations, seeds, feed, livestock, and farm equipment purchased by agricultural producers, prescription drugs for humans, prescription drugs for animals, prosthetic devices, insulin, sales to governments and charities for use in their functions, used factory-built housing, 48% of the price of a new factory-built housing, telecommunications and public utility equipment by a service provider for use outside the city, admissions to city-owned facilities, newspapers, internet access, motor vehicles registered outside of the city, gasoline and fuel subject to special fuel tax, and items purchased for resale. So I think there's a lot going on already. This could cost the city nearly $600,000 a year. The nonprofits that I've been involved in and volunteered with, I see diapers often as an item of value that's given out with food and so forth. So just a few points there that I'd like to make. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. I do want to add, since the last time we discussed this ordinance, I did have a chance to speak with a few folks from Le Cycle, who's one of those charities that deals in, you know, diapers, and they were very excited to hear that we were trying to do this. They were encouraging us to do this, in fact, because they thought that it would actually help with their ability to then provide those diapers, more diapers really, to the folks who are in need in our city. So I was excited to hear that they were supportive of this effort. I've remained supportive of this effort. You know, I guess it's kind of to propose a different alternative, or another alternative, I should say. I would like to see us actually address the cost of living by ensuring that folks who, you know, work in Aurora actually earn enough money to cover their expenses. That's not the world that we live in, that's not the council that we have, but in the interim, I'm happy to support this policy because I think it's a little bit of harm reduction, and it'll do some good.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Jurenski.
So with what my colleague, Councilmember Sundberg, just read, I feel like that's even more of a reason to stop cherry-picking different line items that we're going to make tax exempt and really work towards a broad-based tax cut that will benefit every single person in Aurora.
Very well. Further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Gardner.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm somewhat flabbergasted that the supposed fiscal conservatives on council do not want to support a tax cut that will benefit essentially everyone in our city, both those who have infants and those who one day will have to wear incontinence products. As Councilmember Sundberg observed, we have quite a few carve-outs for sales tax in our city, and in fact, this will pass on the statewide level, at which point we will be forced to affirmatively vote to opt out of that. This allows us to be a leader. Instead, it's going to be forced upon us, and I guess at that point, council will apparently vote to increase taxes, because otherwise they will be exempted statewide. So I really don't understand the, why there's so much pushback on helping families in our city. It's been pointed out that costs continue to rise. It's been pointed out that we exempt other products, and yet we are drawing the line in the sand here. You know, it seems to me if there was a sales tax cut that came forward for developers, I bet you we'd pass that in no time, but for whatever reason, when we have an opportunity to help families in our city, there's just a lot of hesitance to do that. And, you know, a lot of these same objections existed last year when council unanimously, 10 to 0, passed an ordinance to exempt menstrual products. Wasn't a problem at that time, and yet now it seems to be a problem, so not sure why the change there. Thank you.
I have a question for staff, and that is that I believe that the actions by the legislature only pertains to the state's share of sales tax, and that irrespective of, there's no action that's required at the local level. This only applies to our local share of sales tax. Am I correct in that?
That's correct, yeah. That bill at the legislature would only apply to the state's sales tax. We would have to take an action to exempt it. It would not automatically apply to the city's sales tax as being that is Aurora's home rule.
Further discussion on item number 15A?
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
I think that the other thing we have to look at in terms of the tax cut argument, and that I think is really highlighted by the point Councilmember Gardner just made, is that this is a sales tax that would result in somewhat negligible revenue for the city compared to the much larger sales taxes that we already have in place, and like Councilmember Gardner pointed out, if it was a sales tax that only applied to business, we would be jumping up and down to cut that tax, and it would result then in a much larger impact. So we're saying we can't do something for families that has a very small impact on the city's budget, but anytime we have an opportunity to make a much larger sales tax cut, which then significantly diminishes the city's ability to provide services, including public safety services, we're ready to go ahead and do that. So I, yeah, I just am disappointed that folks can't do some, take a small step for the people of our city, but we're always willing to take huge steps for certain special pet classes of members of this council.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Savonic.
I have to admit, I'm incredibly heartened to hear so many tax cutters on this council. This is, this is great news for somebody who is a fiscal conservative, especially hearing it from people who supported the largest tax increase in Colorado history that hit literally every family in our community with higher property taxes. So I'm happy to hear that there's a reversal. That's great news. But again, I think that this is doing exactly what my colleagues are saying, Councilmember Coombs. This is a carve-out. This is where, I understand that there's speculation about what tax cut would and wouldn't pass. The ones that we're talking about are for everybody across the board, something that'll put more money in the pockets of all of our residents, that will make our city more competitive so that when people shop, whether they're in Centennial or Greenwood Village or Parker or any of our neighbors, they'll want to come here because we have a lower rate. They'll want to go and dine at our restaurants because they have a lower rate. This is something that is more equitable as opposed to just cherry-picking and doing more carve-outs. I would love to see us, if you want to talk about ways of making it more revenue-neutral, let's get rid of more of these carve-outs and lower our base rate across the board. I would love to have that conversation, but let's stop playing politics with our tax code, and let's do something that actually will help all of our residents in our city to be more competitive.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
And across-the-board tax, sales tax cut would actually not be more equitable and is regressive. This is something that actually specifically helps people out, specifically who may be struggling, who have particular needs that they need to cover. And if we want to cut our sales tax across the board as an entire city, then I would challenge you to show what you're going to cut out of the budget that isn't also going to be regressive and also harm the worst-off people in our city.
Further discussion? Question before us is the adoption of item number 15A. Call for the question.
The motion passes with six yes votes, three no votes from Councilmembers Savonic, Lawson, and Jurenski.
Will the clerk please read the title to item number 17A? Oh, okay, yeah, please. And then I'll open the public hearing.
Item 17A is Resolution 2022-82, Public Hearing in Consideration of a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado, Making Certain Findings of Fact Regarding the Proposed Annexation of a Parcel of Land Located in the West Half of Section 30, Township 3 South, Range 65 West, and East Half of Section 25, Township 3 South, Range 66 West, of the Sixth Principal Meridian, County of Adams, State of Colorado.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to be heard?
No, Mayor.
Presentation by staff?
Good evening. A petition for annexation was filed with the city clerk for annexation of a approximately six-acre parcel owned by Aurora Highlands LLC. This parcel is located generally east of 470 and north of 26th Avenue along Gun Club Road right-of-way. Attached in your packet is a vicinity map. City Council approved the resolution on February 28th, making a finding that that petition was in substantial compliance with statutory requirements, and set the public hearing date for tonight. The parcel falls within the city's annexation boundary and meets contiguity requirements. This parcel will be integrated into the approved Aurora Highlands Master Plan. The initial zoning ordinance will be presented to City Council concurrently to this evening, and will be zoned MUR, Mixed Use Regional District. The annexation process follows state law, and this annexation will be considered over three council meetings, this being the second of the three where City Council conducts the public hearing, considers the approval of the resolution, making a finding that the land is eligible for annexation, and followed by the consideration of the annexation and zoning ordinances. Happy to answer any questions, and I do have outside council here, but they don't have a separate presentation.
So there's no presentation by the applicant, as I understand it?
That's correct.
And no one from the public to speak? Questions of staff and the applicant by members of council? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Motion is in order. A motion is in order.
There we go. Motion to approve items 17A through C.
It's been moved by Councilmember Savonic, seconded by...
Jurenski.
Seconded by Councilmember Jurenski.
Mayor, I believe we need to vote on these separately. There's going to be a public hearing for item 17C.
Okay, so combined, I'm sorry.
No.
No.
So 17A.
So, Mayor, I'll revise my motion to approve item 17A.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. And seconded by Councilmember Jurenski to approve item number 17A. Is there a discussion? Seeing no discussion, the question before us is the adoption of item number 17A. Call for the question.
The motion passes unanimously to approve Resolution 2022-82.
So this is not a public hearing?
It's not.
Very well. Will the clerk now please read the title to item number 17B?
Item 17B is ordinance 2022-20, an ordinance annexing a parcel of land located in the west half of Section 30, Township 3 South, Range 65 West, and the east half of Section 25, Township 3 South, Range 66 West, of the Sixth Principal Meridian, County of Adams, State of Colorado.
Brief presentation by staff?
This item is in conjunction with the prior presentation is the ordinance for that item.
Questions of staff? Seeing none, a motion is in order. Councilmember Savonic.
Motion to approve item 17B.
It's been moved by Councilmember Savonic, seconded by...
Mayor, second.
Councilmember Lawson to approve item number 17B. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, the question is the adoption of item number 17B. Call for
Councilmembers Savonic, we need your vote.
Yes, there we go.
The motion passes unanimously to approve ordinance 2022-20.
Clerk, now please read the title to item number 17C.
Item 17C is ordinance 2022-21, Public Hearing in Consideration of an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado, Zoning 6.097 Acres of Land, More or Less, Generally Located Adjacent to the East Side of E-470, Between 26th Avenue and 38th Avenue, Within the City of Aurora, County of Adams, State of Colorado, to Mixed Use Regional District, and Amending the Zoning Map Accordingly.
Public hearing is now open. Presentation by staff?
Good evening. Debbie Bickmeyer, Senior Planner. As presented by Jacob, this is a zoning map amendment for the initial zoning to coordinate with the annexation of his property, approximately 6.1 acres. The proposed zoning, Mixed Use Regional District, is compatible with the City Corridor Comprehensive Plan Place Type, the adjacent zoning, and proposed development of a future hospital and medical campus. Staff finds the proposed zoning map amendment meets the approval criteria in the UDO for the reasons stated in the staff report, and the Planning Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the zoning map amendment at a public hearing on March 23rd, 2022. I can take questions?
Presentation by the applicant?
He's available for questions, but has no presentation.
Members of the public, is there anyone who wishes to speak?
No.
Questions from council to the, to staff or the applicant? Seeing none, the question before us is the, oh, public hearing is now closed. Motion is in order. Councilmember Lawson.
I move to, move to 17C, sorry. I think that's the one we're on. Yeah, 17C.
Oh, I'm sorry, 17B?
No, 17C, Mayor.
C. Okay. Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Lawson, seconded by...
Medina.
Seconded by Councilmember Medina to approve item number 17C. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, the question before us is the adoption of item number 17C. Call for the question.
Councilmember Coombs, we need your vote. Oh, thank you.
Yes, sorry, I'm having ease grip issues.
The motion passes unanimously to approve ordinance 2022-21.
Will the clerk now please read the title to item number 19A?
Item 19A is consideration to appoint one member and reappoint one member to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Motion?
Mayor.
Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, sir. Move to appoint Robert Armstrong and reappoint Bobby McClure to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
It's been moved by Councilmember McConnell, seconded by...
Medina.
Seconded by Councilmember Medina. Discussion? Seeing no further discussion, now the question before us is the adoption of item number 19A. Call for the question.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor votes yes.
The motion passes unanimously for item 19A.
Will the clerk now please read the title to item number 19B?
Item 19B is consideration to amend the 2022 council meeting calendar.
Motion?
Mayor, motion to approve 19B.
It's moved by Councilmember Medina, seconded by...
Mayor, second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lawson to approve item number 19B. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
So I believe we decided in study session that it was going to be option, proposal number one, that we were going to approve with this calendar change. I just wanted to confirm that that's what we're voting on.
Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, question before us is the adoption of item number 19B. Call for the question.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor votes yes.
Councilmembers Sundberg, Gardner, and McConnell, we need your votes.
I vote yes. It's not popping up for me for some reason.
Okay. The motion passes to amend the 2022 council meeting calendar.
Will the clerk now please read the title to item number 19C?
Item 19C is determination of final candidates to be interviewed for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion? Councilmember Coombs.
I assume that we are going to have some discussion, but I guess I will start a motion to frame the conversation, which will be to interview the top four candidates.
The motion, it's been moved by Councilmember Coombs, seconded by...
Murillo.
Councilmember Murillo to interview the top four candidates. Discussion?
with both Excel and P U C. They will be at the Pfizer meeting on April twenty-second. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have to report.
All right, Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to give everyone an update. Uh, this past Saturday, we hosted the second of eight gun buyback events that we are hosting this summer at the Aurora Day Labor Center. We had a hundred and twenty-four firearms turned in, and I just wanted to share a couple of the stories that we heard from that. Uh, one was a child who was riding along a bike path and found two guns laying on the ground by a middle school and brought those in to be, to be turned in. Um, and I don't think I need to tell everyone what would have happened if those guns would have been picked up by the wrong hands. And then another person brought in a firearm that was in their home where they were afraid of violence in that that gun was going to be used against them. So, you know, certainly very worthwhile and, and we're able to make our community a little bit safer. Uh, and then the next event is going to be Saturday, March, or May twenty-first at Platt Park Church in Denver. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Councilmember Zavonic.
Thank you, Mayor. Two weeks ago, in my council report, I talked about an audit that had been presented to the Public Safety Meeting on the Colorado Criminal Justice Record Act. And at the tail end of that, I mentioned that there was unfortunately information brought forward to us about a second issue within the records department. And since then, there's been a lot of news coverage and talk about a audit that was done by P R I management. And I want to highlight a couple of things from the report that was presented to all of us on council. And that is that it says, "As a result of the delays in processing police reports, violent crimes reported to the police, uh, the Aurora Police Department may not have been investigated for months, enabling suspects who might otherwise have been investigated and taken into custody to reoffend." Later in the report, it says that "When employees were asked in interviews if it's possible that serious criminal offenses could be in the queue, which have been overlooked and not investigated, all of them said yes. It is a near certainty, according to the report, that violent offenses are being reported without timely investigation." Later, it says that "It is administrative errors and failures such as this that have led to cases like the Charleston, South Carolina church mass murder and the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School shooting, both of which would not have happened had law enforcement not erred in the process of prior cases involving the suspects." There seems to be a concerted effort to downplay the seriousness of this report. Um, there's a lot of unanswered questions, to be certain. And so I would invite all of you who want to have, hear more questions asked and to ask more questions through us to attend this Thursday, eight-thirty a.m., the Public Safety Meeting, where we will be asking questions on this report and digging into it deeper. But I want to be clear, the backlog is real. The serious threat that this type of backlog poses potentially to our city is real, and the failure at all levels to not catch this is real. Now, hopefully, as the work continues to get through this backlog, we'll find out that no serious crime, there was nothing out there that wasn't investigated, and I hope that we understand that we dodged a bullet and that it's not something that we should ever be okay with and say, aha. This, the, the downplaying of the seriousness, seriousness of this report has been nothing more than politics. We need to demand more clarity, and we have a lot of questions that still need to be answered, but we should never, at any point, take the seriousness of this report as anything more than that. It is a very serious issue, and I hope that you all tune in this Thursday, eight-thirty a.m., for the Public Safety Meeting.
Councilmember Jorinsky.
I have nothing to report.
Uh, Councilmember Mario.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, just two things. Um, wanted to thank the resident leadership council through the Andrew's Medical Campus for hosting a meeting at Moorhead this last weekend. Myself and Councilmember Sundberg were in attendance, as well as one of our officers and our youth violence prevention lead. So we, we talked a lot. Actually, all of our questions were from folks who are, were from the area, from the community, mostly Ward One and Two, and centered around youth violence. And they had a lot of questions around, you know, school district plans around violence. What is the city doing around youth violence? And, um, we shared a lot about the work that we're doing. So I wanted to thank them for engaging in that conversation. Certainly, there'll be a part two. And then my town hall for this month is Thursday, April twenty-eighth at six p.m., and we will be back at Moorhead. Thank you.
Councilmember Sundberg.
Sir, I have no report at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Medina.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just to reiterate, I had my town hall last Wednesday over at the Adult Center. Uh, went really well. Jessica Prosser, I'd like to thank her staff for doing a great presentation on the unhoused and the things that the city is doing, and great conversations with community members. And our next town hall will be on May third, where we'll look at the city budget priorities for Ward Three. Thank you.
Councilmember McConno.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to start by giving a shout out to Erica for having me come out with her at the Havana Heights neighborhood to work on a traffic, neighborhood traffic calming application. And I just want to let the rest of you all know that if you are having speeding issues or unsafe driving issues in your area, please reach out. I'm happy to come help you all knock doors and gather the signatures necessary to get a traffic calming study underway. Uh, and then the next thing I have is our Ward Four meeting is actually going to be this Thursday at six-thirty p.m. at Colorado Early Colleges. Uh, we're going to be discussing the budget with Greg Hayes and then the consequences and realities of the camping ban with Ren Echo. Hope to see you all there. Have a great night.
Councilmember Coombs.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my upcoming town hall is on the nineteenth. That is next Tuesday at six p.m. at the Heather Gardens Clubhouse, and we will be having, uh, our, topic of our meeting is recycling, trash, and composting, and we will have some guest speakers on those subjects. Um, and so again, that's at six o'clock, Heather Gardens Clubhouse. And this meeting will not be hybrid. Our subsequent meetings at the Central Recreation Center will all be hybrid meetings because that facility is now set up to have hybrid meetings, which is very exciting. Um, for Dr. Cog, we had our board retreat last Saturday, and, um, we had a conversation about some important activities that have already been undertaken, including the Accountable Health Communities Program through the Area Agency on Aging, and conversation about the future of that program and expanding it to, um, continue the record of that program of reducing emergency room admissions for aging adults in our community. Um, in addition, we talked about other strategic planning initiatives. Um, a few that I would like to highlight are a regional sustainability plan that is under discussion, as well as a conversation about what role Dr. Cog may have in addressing housing issues in our region. So talking about a regional approach to that and what kind of role Dr. Cog could play. One person pointed out that typically, um, Dr. Cog plays a role of sort of a university, not an enforcer, so providing local communities with resources and information and bringing folks together to have discussions about what each community is doing and learn from one another. And I know that's what we generally do at Dr. Cog, um, and I'm looking forward to seeing how that conversation on housing as well as that regional sustainability plan takes shape. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Per Tenbergen. Seeing no further business before the City Council, Aurora City Council, this meeting is adjourned.